All right, welcome, everybody. I call to order the Beaverton School Board Work Session for our Student Advisory Committee for June 5th, 2022. We'll start with a quick roll call of board members. Please answer present when I call your name. Susan Greenberg.
Here.
Karen Perez.
Presente.
Eric Simpson.
Present.
Sunita Gard.
Present.
Ugana Enenaya.
Present.
Becky Timchuk.
Here.
Tom Klett is here, and so we have all seven board members in attendance. And I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Balderas for introductions for our Student Advisory Committee.
Thank you, and I want to really thank the students that are here today and also staff. And I'm going to have staff come up and introduce kids and then also talk about the process for this year and how we're looking at ways to engage our students a little bit quicker next year. So this year, we started a little bit later in the process and didn't get the group up and running until winter time. And this coming year, our hopes to get started much, much sooner with student engagement. And I know Pat McCray, our Equity Officer, is going to be explaining a little bit of that, but Pat, thank you for your work done all year with our students.
Absolutely, thank you, and good evening, Board. It's nice to be here. I'm super excited to be representing our Superintendent Students Advisory Council and being able to introduce them. We are learning in the moment that in the last weeks of the school year, guess what? Junior and senior students are a little busy. And so we have some students who are able to join us tonight in person. We have some students who have shared their words that we'll share with you from that. And as Dr. Balderas said, this year was one of transition. And so in our efforts to continue the work of the Beaverton Student Advisory Council that many of you were familiar with last year, we did kind of get off to a later start than we'd like. Really proud to say that we are already getting names for participants next year. One of our participants who you'll meet tonight is going to continue with us next year while the others are graduating, and we're going to celebrate them and their achievement. But we're really excited to bring their voices to you. Myself, along with Dr. Tatiana Savayos, Equity and Inclusion Administrator, and Christina Schultz, Assistant Administrator in our Flex Program, have been really lucky to get to work with Dr. Balderas and Carrie Delft in supporting the work of the students and in communicating work back and forth to our schools. So with that, I would love to invite our student leaders up to the chairs. Come on up.
And also I want to say that our board representative is Dr. Perez.
Thank you. Yeah, and Board Member Perez, thank you so much for being part of so many of those meetings. I was going to say, in addition to the regular challenges of kind of a later start, like the past couple of years have done, this group also encountered challenges such as the snow day, where we were supposed to have a meeting and all of the adult supervisors were stuck in traffic in the cars, trying to figure out if we could get the meeting virtual in that regard. We did not do so, but this group has persevered despite that. So first up, I would love to introduce Priya Gadi from BASE, who's going to introduce herself and share a little bit about the concerns and issues that were being experienced at BASE.
Hi, my name is Priya, and I'm a current junior at BASE. I go by she/her pronouns. And something I'd like to talk about BASE is like inclusion and like what activities we do. So BASE is incorporating more activities such as Unity Week and building more inclusion in our community. And we've had activities such as like in the cafeteria, we'd have like students playing music, like with guitar, with drums in the cafeteria, which is like related to their culture, and have like a cultural like clothing day, I guess, like where they get to like express themselves and like wear clothes from their culture and occasional potlucks, where we have them like bring in their food and kind of share with other students to build a better connection. Something else I'd like to talk about is mental health. And while we do have a mental like wellness room located in the office, something that I'd like, and like counselors, which are always like a good resource for students to talk to, not many students know about them. So something that BASE is working on is like reaching out to students and making sure that students know that this resource exists for them to like access and they can build a relationship with their counselor. The other category was grading, and grading, like several other high schools, is from one to four, and which then translates to a letter grade and like A through, A through C, I think. We have opportunity weeks, which helps like students bring their grade up and relieves like stress from finals. Something I really like about my school is that there are so many opportunities for students to involve in like making a change in their community. So I'd like to like talk about a campaign that I founded and along with many others that students around me have also like worked with. So my school, like because we're like a middle school and a high school, we don't have like that much room for like physical activity, like we don't have a field outside that like many like comprehensive high schools have. So then me and like a couple others, we founded a campaign, and it's called Active Minds. And we kind of engaged our students to like promote physical activity in our community and kind of like youth social media used like during lunch, we'd like tell, we'll like talk about like the benefits of like physical activity and how it positively impacts your mental health. So I think that these steps that students take to like connect with students around them and build a better community can like make a better impact in like their school. And that's kind of it.
Hello, my name is Grace Morinishi. I'm from Akma, a senior. Akma is a middle school and high school. My pronouns are dehi. On inclusion and racism, anti-bias incidents is what is called incidents that students at Akma occur, experience racism, daily racism, you can call them microaggressions. But often, it's things that are reoccurring throughout their yearly experiences. So that's the first point. Anti-bias incidents are occurring repeatedly and not by the same people. I'd like to stress that the report kind of system that I'm thinking of hoping to create is one that just allows the students who experience these microaggressions or uncomfortable situations know that there, these incidents are being recognized as that they're occurring if there can be some kind of a reporting system that is much more accessible and is not about reporting the offender, since it's not about the individual student, it is about the fact that they have an individual student. Their mouths are just a channel for the rhetoric or behaviors or joking that they understand is allowed to be escaped from their mouth. It's just, young kids especially, and that's why I'm glad I'm representing a middle school, it is that it's like kids like to repeat things, and if they don't know that they're, it's inappropriate to say and that they'll be reprimanded. And since anti-racism is not taught and we don't use specific language when saying in classrooms, all are welcome. What we mean, what we'd like to say, what we'd like to hear would be like, please don't say racial slurs type of thing, and here is why. I think that if students could be educated upon that, they can have more chance to be able to understand what they're not supposed to say that can harm their peers. So uneducated students using racial slurs, possibly because they believe it is fun and that they are not supposed to say them, that occurs a lot, especially at the middle school level, but like from fifth grade up to freshmen, at least from instances that I've heard specifically. And then it's, it can occur with staff and just anyone about not understanding what are racial slurs and who can say them, kind of, just because if any of such things slips up, it really impacts the students that they know it happened. And that's why I say it happens yearly and tax on, that they remember everything that happens. But we don't ever remember anything, any of these instances being recognized at all, like being seen. So I'd like a reporting system for that. Changing it.
Go to the next one.
I call it effective racism, again, because it's not about the individuals or the offenders, it is about the students who are subjected to this repetitive, inappropriate, harmful behaviors. That does impact their learning because it severely impacts their mental health and makes the education system, or the education environment not such a safe space if they know they are not protected against. Next slide. On grading and inclusion and racism, Akma specifically has a two-year-long AP English Literature and Composition class, which I personally have struggled with, and this is why. Being not of purely European descent, I am not so interested, or not so easily engaged in the culture that we really in-depth get to learn about, such as there are art projects that require diving into medieval or European Renaissance cultural, like medieval text fonts, clothing, drawing the capes and people in armor, styles and mythology, as well as Christianity. There's a lot of that. It makes it much easier to go through the class and to be engaged and connected to with that curriculum, which is a whole two years and our only required English class option that we have. Makes it a lot more easy to be engaged by that material and even willing at all to do like the HP or to try to get a good grade or enjoy this work that they're required to do if they, if it is of their own culture. Whereas for me, like being native or Japanese with fourth generations, like my parents were in the internment camp, and we know what happened to native people with their children being taken out from their families and forced into this education that I believe is still the US education system curriculum that is, was taught back then, was taught now. I don't see it having been changed so much. So what I'd like is more courses accessible to all students with this changing demographics of Oregon, so that students can see themselves reflected in the curriculum, so that they can be more equally able to participate in class for better grades. Next slide. Mental health enableism and grading, students with ADHD, just myself, this is just a personal experience, but which I have many friends who experience the same thing. School cannot be fun because we're always behind on work just because of how ADHD works that it's hard to do homework outside of the school environment when we're facilitated working time. But then when you get behind on these things, since homework can't just like disappear, it doesn't get rid of that, this distances them from their teachers and the learning environment, again, because like to ask their teachers for help on an assignment that was due like months ago is hard to do. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Piper. I'm also from Akma, and I use they/them pronouns. And before I shorten the slide stuff, well, no, I'll shorten the slide, never mind. So the first thing I have is about inclusion, and I have two things on that. One thing that I have noticed at specifically Akma, but also other schools, like in the past that I've been to, like in elementary school and stuff, is there's a lot of teachers who are white, like a majority of the teachers, specifically at Akma, like I can literally count the amount of non-white teachers on my hand, three, because it, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I kind of do know why, but also I do think there should definitely be, not that there is an, are an effort, but maybe more of an effort to look for teachers specifically in fields of like English and history, because that is definitely, for, sorry, for teachers of color, because specifically in those areas, it tends to get very, like Grace was saying, like Eurocentric. And even with the teachers, like in history or something, where they try to make an effort to not only teach the European and try to go out like of their comfort zone, I guess, still, it sometimes gets a little uncomfortable for, probably, like, at least for me specifically, like talking about my personal experience, it can be uncomfortable talking about, or hearing a teacher who's white talking about like history, where they're not fully educated in like, in the sense of, it, like, as opposed to like if a teacher from, who wasn't white, was talking from personal experience, it can kind of be an interesting experience. And I do think that looking for a lot of teachers who aren't white could definitely be helpful, or at least, yeah, 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 that. And the next other thing is something that I've noticed at Akma is when students are introduced in sixth grade, at Akma, there's like about a hundred people in that class, it seems like, I would say, pretty, pretty, like, there's a diverse, like, still, like, there's probably a majority of white people, but like, there's like, quite a few, like, people, there are people from all over also. But as you, like, I've been at Akma since sixth grade, and I've noticed that as you go up, and like now I'm a senior, there actually isn't a lot of people of color really left. And I find that interesting because not only does that mean like, like, the graduating class wouldn't actually have a lot of people of color, but also just in general, as a school now, like from what I'm seeing, at least Akma, is super white. And it's interesting, because last year, I was taking some AP tests, and I went to another school that wasn't Akma to take one of those tests. And I'm like, I was just like, whoa, there's actually more than like ninety percent white people here. Not that that there is at Akma, but like, that's what I'm, that's like, that's at least what I'm seeing. And that can also cause like a super like, like, like an environment where there's like more likely hearing a ton of slurs and stuff like that. And at the very least, a ton of microaggressions, which happens a lot. And I think that is also something that, at least for like option schools, could be looked at, where like the retention rate, I guess, of people of color at these schools and how that, like, how that looks and how to improve keeping people of color actually staying at these schools and like wanting to be in an environment where like they can also be seen within the student population and the teacher population. And the next thing I want to talk about is grading, where it, I have a lot of feelings on grading, because it's really like rough, really, because the main, the main problem I have with grading is that rubrics are not given, really. How like it, in my, in my like opinion slash experience, it should be, is students should be able to get a good grade if they want to and if they try, and they try to put this effort into getting these, they're like assignments and all that stuff in on time. But how it has been is rubrics are given to students, except they're not actually rubrics. It's like one, two, three, four, but it's the descriptions of what one, two, three, four means for the teachers, when they give it to students, is like not meeting proficient, meeting proficient, like nearly proficient, but that's the only description there is. And there's not actually a description of what that means. And because of that, it can be super biased, which is a big issue for me, because like, like, and not just for me, but like, in my like personal experience, as someone who's like on a five oh four plan and someone who's like a person of color also, I'm, I have to wonder, like, are those reasons why I'm getting bad, not bad grades, but like, could that negatively, just, just based off of my experience and not even my work, is that negatively impacting my grade? Because something that I've noticed is if I try to be, if I, if I talk to a teacher and I'm like, hey, I don't think this grade is exactly what I did, and they're like, oh, you're right, then I'm like, wait, why can I debate my teachers on my grades when my grades probably should be like a fact? And it should be, they, they should know what they're grading. And this isn't entirely the teacher's fault, because I don't think the teachers really have, have rubrics, like, they don't have, they have to make their own thing. And that can be a, like, it's, I'm sure it's a problem for teachers and students. But I've noticed that for a lot of people, and not just me, there is a, like, there's a clear like thing where, oh, this one teacher might grade these students at a, like a better than, better than these other students, and the work there is basically the same. And that is a thing that is definitely a problem. And let me see what else I said. Oh, yeah, and how, how it works after that is when they put the grades into synergy, it also, it, it shows that, like, since it's supposed to be proficient in grading, if you, you're supposed to know, you're supposed to be proficient in like the subject, right? But how it usually turns out is you, if you, if you get a one or even a two in an assignment at some point, at any point in the semester, even if you later can show that proficiency, they don't actually, like, how, how, how it turns out is if, if that happens, if you get a one or two, your grade is kind of messed up for like the entirety of that semester, and you can't really fix it. And more often than not, you're not given multiple opportunities for a standard or standards, where if one assignment is given like a weight, like, it's weighted in like seven standards, and that assignment is not, like, you don't get a good grade on that assignment, you could even potentially fail the class despite getting all fours in all the other assignments. And I could, I could talk about this for a long time, I don't want to take up too much time. So basically, and from what I've heard from a lot of other students and in my personal experience, how the grading system, not, and it's not even necessarily a teacher thing, it is, but not only that, but the grading, like in general, how it works out is because of like the way it is like made, it can definitely be a avenue for teachers or for just like synergy, like the system itself, like, like as a computer, to mess up students or target students without, like, keeping in mind that these students actually are hopefully like, wanting to do something, whether it be college or whether it be a job after college, and these stuff matters, like in high school or maybe even middle school sometimes. And that's something that I've like thought about a lot, and that's something that I'd like definitely want to like bring to everyone's attention, just because that's really important. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
If they're going to go through all the students who weren't here today, well, hello, everybody. My name is Ruth Ramirez Pineda. I am the representative from Aloha High School, and I use she and her pronouns. I'm a little nervous to talk in front of you guys, this kind of seems like a little scary scenario. You guys all seem so sweet, got smiles on your faces, but it's just a little daunting, but it's okay. So yes, I'm from Aloha High School. Talking about inclusion and, talking about inclusion, a little sort of like victories I wrote down, just because I think it's always important to celebrate the good things going on in our school, where this year, we had a lot more diverse or representative, or clubs that represent a lot of different affinities at our school, such as like this year, I think it was one of our first years, having the Asian Pacific Islander Club, which was so amazing. We also had the Career Center set up a field trip for them, so they could attend a conference at PSU for Asian and Pacific Islander students. That was a big thing, that was just such a good win, as well as like, I know a lot of schools have them, but their unity assembly, huge, just like so amazing, seeing so many different clubs and different affinities being represented, from dances to music, like that was performed, just so amazing. A couple of things I personally have noticed when it comes to inclusion at my school is, and it kind of relates to the grading as well, or like the curriculum, is with our sheltered, sheltered classes specifically. So that being classes that are taught, not only they're like not taught in English, sometimes they're taught in Spanish, primarily at my school, they're taught in Spanish. I've been a student who has helped out within these classes. A lot of the times at my school, we don't have teachers equipped to teach these sheltered classes to students who are new to the school, new to the country. And that's been something that I just, when it comes to including students and making sure that everyone feels welcome, that they're all getting a fair chance at an education, that has been an issue that I've, or like, yeah, it's been an issue that I've seen often at my school, when it's teachers who speak a little bit of Spanish, are teaching an entire grade, an entire class, entire like social studies class with Google Translate. Like, that's not okay. You're not giving a student who is new to this country, who doesn't know how to speak up, a fair opportunity to learn the curriculum, as like all the other students, that sometimes puts them behind. And so when it comes to that inclusion part, that's a big thing I've seen at my school personally, as well as when it comes to like the dual language program. My school has done a great, I feel like they've done a great job at allowing the opportunity to take a dual like credit class for a lot of students. But again, when it comes to these sheltered classes, like, because they're classes that we don't have people equipped to like teach in Spanish, it's now a teacher who doesn't speak in Spanish, students who only speak Spanish, who speak any other language, and it just doesn't seem fair. It doesn't seem okay for these students who, again, like, a lot of the time, they don't speak the language, they don't have access or don't have that support to speak up or to say something, or they genuinely just don't know any better. It doesn't seem fair for them, especially when it's like your curriculum, and then they're trying to graduate, but then they can't because they don't know, or like, if they try to go on to like next step or like further their educational career, it's like they're not fully equipped like the rest of us students are. So that's just something I've noticed, as well as like, yeah. And my next point was, at Aloha, our Wellness Center was also a big, like, I feel like it's a huge success at my school. I feel like, I think for the four years I've been there, even during like COVID, that online world, our Wellness Center was very accessible to everyone, which I thought was a very good thing, especially, you know, like, it was crazy, it was very chaotic, students didn't know how to handle their emotions, how to do school again, and having that available to us was very like helpful. Like another, like, I added little victories as well, just because I love to celebrate the little victories we have at my school. This past, like, I think, two months, we had little wellness, like pop-ups. One of them was like meditation and yoga, so they were like outside doing yoga with one of our counselors, and it was just like so fun. It was like sunny out, people are like, you know, doing yoga. It was fun. But also for that point, I would say, I think I've even experienced it, where because we do have one center, it's very nice. However, I think like the entire, like, all schools are feeling it. It's very understaffed, like, it's very hard to sometimes find one-on-one attention because we have so many students, yet not enough people in this wellness center when you need them, like, if you're going through a crisis, but there's also another student going through a crisis, it's very hard to get that one-on-one time when you need it. And so I would say, like, sometimes I know counselors have a lot on their plate, like, like a lot on their plate, but it would also be nice. And like, I don't know how their job description works necessarily, but I think maybe them being more accessible would be nice. And again, I don't know if it's just a my school issue, but accessibility to our counselors when we are like in a crisis or just need a talk, or it's like something going on, I think would be a lot more helpful. But again, I know that it's an issue like everywhere, where it's like, we're understaffed. Like my school, I know I felt it, like, where we're understaffed, not only from, like I mentioned earlier, with shelter classes, dual pro, like dual language programs, other programs, like, you really feel it. And so when it comes to that mental health aspect of it, I think it would, I love that we've implemented this Wellness Center at my school. I think it's so helpful. However, now it's like, now that we have it, how do we like make it better? How do we like keep pushing so that we have it for more years? But also like, how do, like, again, how do we make it better? And so if we could have more people in there, I think that's always such a nice thing. And like, I know at my middle school as well, Mountain View, we used to have a Wellness Center, and I remember, like, as a middle schooler who like doesn't really know what's going on, was going to go into high school, it was definitely helpful to have. So I don't know what the status is on like other high schools or other elementary schools, but it's a great program that we've had at my school, and I feel like all the schools should have. It's just very nice to have a resource where you can go in without having to set up an appointment. When it comes to grading, one of the things I mentioned, which you guys probably already know, you know, we grade on a scale of one to four, which then like translate to, translates to a letter grade. And, you know, you look at that, then you have your weighted and unweighted, depending on the AP classes you take. And yeah, I mean, when it came to grading, I think, like I mentioned, I think the biggest, or I think the biggest sometimes issue is that when it's like a math class or something, compared to when it's like a literature class, it's like sometimes the grading can be a little subjective, just because the like, the little thingy that tells you what, like, how to get a four or whatever, is not always super clear, I feel like. My teachers have done a well job at like always handing me the little curriculum or like what you need to get a four, but I feel like it's not always like, very like, doesn't have a lot to say. So that's always been a hard thing, again, like when it just comes to the Um, so that's always been a hard thing, again, like, when it just comes to the curriculum, specifically at my school, I think the biggest issue is just like, so, sheltered classes, students who don't speak English. We have a lot of that at my school, where a lot of students don't speak English, whether they speak Spanish, Arabic, or a different language, they don't speak English, and they don't have access to help, they don't know how to get it, they don't know how to communicate, they're trying to talk to a teacher through Google Translate, which is not always the most accurate. Um, so when it comes to the curriculum, I think that's one of the biggest things I would change, or I would try to implement more like, access to like, being able to communicate with your teacher. Um, a couple of the points I also put down were like, um, like, a good thing that, like, has been nice about being back, it's like, again, I just added a lot of good points, because I was like, I love the good points. Um, being back without like a lot of restrictions definitely has like amplified our school spirit with events, like dances, et cetera. Um, another thing that I felt like, I needed to mention, because I know I've talked about it, um, this entire year, uh, as being part of this little board, was like, the facilities at my school. Um, I know I mentioned this a couple of times, but, um, we have a student at my school who is in a wheelchair, and oftentimes, I've seen this student struggle, like, to get around school. I know that with, like, um, I know that with his teachers and like aides and stuff, they've created a plan, and like, you know, how to do school, et cetera, but like, as a student who doesn't know this student, and like, just watches, I've seen how hard it is to get around the school, like, I kind of say this because I, like, it was just a little funny moment, but also kind of a sad moment. I watched this student try to get around, like, in the middle of passing time, try to get around so many other students, he could not get around students, like, he sort of like, ended up just kind of driving through the crowd, and like, hitting a student, but it's like, I don't know, as weird or as funny as that scenario or that experience might have been, it's like, isn't that sad? Like, it's a student in a wheelchair, they can't get to class, they have to resort, or like, they literally don't know what to do to get to class, or to get to wherever he had to be, except run through a big crowd of kids. And I don't know, personally, me, I think that, or the school should be equipped. I think, you know, at Aloha, we are having that new office remodel, which is so nice, especially with that safety problem, I think, I see it at my school, anybody can just come in and out, doors are always open. I feel like it's an issue that like, you know, we've all heard, but like, it's kind of scary when you know that like, people can come in and out of the doors, students are opening doors for people, and like, you know, I just feel like at my school, a lot of the issue, like, a lot of the issues I've noticed are facility-wise, um, which is a little sad, because it's like, you know, I should be able to use the bathroom, or I should be able to come into school and feel safe and like, know that not just anybody can walk through the gym doors, or anybody can just walk through the main office, which I'm so grateful that we're like remodeling the front office, because I feel like that'll be a bigger push towards more better security. However, it's also like, when it comes to money, and where money is being allocated, it's kind of like, I know we just had a little bit of a remodel in the office, like, just a little bit or something, and we've had little projects going around our school, but it's like, now you're gonna tear down the office, where you guys just spent a little bit of money, and now you're gonna use it to build a front office, which is great, because you're increasing our security, but now it's like, that money that you just used, how could you have used that to make our school more accessible for students? To better our facilities, to better bathrooms, to better doors, to better the stairs. We have one ramp, I think, at our school, and it's like, in the front, and I've been on crutches, and trying to get up that is not fun. Like, you have to go all the way around school, like, we have a little thing that will get you down to the second floor, but I, I've heard from the student that he prefers to go all the way around, just because it doesn't feel comfortable. Um, so yeah, and that's kind of all I had, so, thank you.
And I want to apologize to Ruth, because you were very much in attendance, not, not attending as it said up there, that was on us. We did have some students as well, who could not be here in person, but they did want to add information on those slides, and so we can try to make the information on that, uh, accessible to you. Thank you to our students who presented, board members, as you heard, you could identify some themes in what they presented. One of the things the team did early on was to identify three themes that they wanted to focus on throughout the year. That was inclusion, that was mental health, which were both continuations from the group who had worked the year before, and then with the addition of grading as a theme that they wanted to focus on. As you can tell, we were really good this year at identifying opportunities for growth. What we're excited about next year with a sooner start, is looking at developing and increasing student capacity and leadership to look at how we address those opportunities, how we address those challenges. So I want to take this moment to acknowledge that three of the students that you heard from are going to be leaving Beaverton, as we always plan, uh, as they graduate this spring, so thank you. And Priya, no pressure, but as a returning member, next year, uh, Priya will be part of the student leadership group that will continue that work that we started this year. With that, if there is time for the board to ask questions, I wanted to give that opportunity. This, this question we included, um, students were invited to ask questions, as you kind of heard in the presentations tonight, questions that they might want to present to the school board, and so one that a, that a, um, student member shared was, why are scholarship opportunities kept so quiet between schools? There were some questions that came up about opportunities to access funds that can help with, uh, scholarship opportunities. And so, that was something I, we didn't know if the board wanted to comment on that, or if that's something that we can share with our school leaders as well, particularly college and career centers, to make sure they know about access and opportunity. With that, thank you, student leaders, both attending and not attending. And board, if there's any questions that you have, we can take them now.
Thanks, Pat. Um, board members, any questions for amazing students? Uh, Ugana?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, one of the points that was made, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, yes. Piper, one of the points you made, you mentioned something, um, uh, regarding the higher, I, I don't have the exact, you know, words that you used, you said, the higher you go up in grades, the lower the number of students of color, why do you think that is?
Uh, it's just, um, so, uh, there could be like a few reasons for that. Uh, I, I think a, a, a big reason could, uh, well, I know like, just in general, uh, it kind of, like, like for me, and for like, just statistics, uh, students of color are kind of not, not decentivized always, but at least not incentivized necessarily to graduate. That's definitely like, uh, like a theme that I've, uh, experienced, and I've seen to like, in, like, life. Uh, and I think that could go on also, just, uh, in, in school in general, where a student might not feel that welcome in, like, this school, so they might try another school, or, uh, so that's, that's one, one thing, but, uh, also, uh, it, it could just be a thing of at Acma specifically, where we have, uh, like, the lottery, and then we have the second consideration, and it could be a thing where, uh, like, the lottery, I'm, I'm not sure, but it could not be, uh, like, no, no, nothing's taken into account regarding race or anything like that. And then for second consideration, there is definitely the case of, uh, or the possibility of there being bias within that, because like, they can, you can, you can see the students, you know who the students are at that point. So there definitely could be something going on there. I remember when I was in sixth grade, and this is, the person said this isn't at Acma anymore, but, uh, at, at, the, the, I was at a back-to-school night, and what was said was, if you're, uh, an English learner, or on IEP, you probably shouldn't come here, and I'm like, what? Uh, like, that's not, I, I, I'm not saying that Acma reflects those values, but I'm not saying they aren't either, because I don't know a lot of English learners or people, I mean, there are people on IP's, but like, I do kind of, I, I, I kind of like, it's like an unspoken, but like, you kind of get the vibe of it being not as, in, in, I don't know, it, it's kind of, it's kind of weird. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it, like, everyone at Acma or anything like that, or, but like, something I've noticed, like, uh, what I was saying, where I went to another school, and definitely could see the huge difference where, and this school wasn't an option school, so I wonder if, because Acma's an option school, and kept kind of like, uh, in the, like, it's kind of like, not, not exclusive, but it, it kind of is sometimes, where a student might not go there, not because they're not talented enough, but because other reasons that I'm not exactly sure of. But I think that could definitely be, definitely be a thing, yeah.
And it wasn't to put you on the spot, I just wanted to know if there was anything that the board could do to make that better, I, that wasn't to put you on the spot, okay, and I thank you for your response.
You.
Susan? And then Karen?
Sorry, um, first of all, thank you all for being here today, I know, it's, it is the end of the school year, and I know for seniors, I, I think you've, you're kind of have a break before graduation, and congratulations to you, and I know you're probably getting ready for finals, if not, in the midst of finals right now, so thank you for being here today. Um, my question, I mean, it's not really a question, it's more about a comment about the consistency of grading throughout the system, the school system. I mean, it, and I can say that it's not a new theme, I've heard it for many years, that we don't have a consistent grading system. And you know what someone would say at Aloha might be different than what someone says at Sunset or Southbridge, so I appreciate you bringing that up as a concern. Thank you.
Karen?
Um, hey, everybody, um, it's been an amazing year, um, learning from you, um, during the meetings, and I know I, I too was sad that we didn't start earlier, since it's, for many of you, you'd been working um, last year on different projects, and wanted to continue those this year, but as we, um, rebuild for next year, um, I've appreciated your voices, you know, you talked about the grading, the facilities, um, access for our, um, newcomers, um, and also, um, some of the, um, access to mental health support to the different schools, and I remember we talked about that last, the year before as well, some of those topics, so I, uh, know that Susan, you mentioned last year, or even this year, how do we involve, how can we have students on our board? Um, and so that, I think, as we look, move forward to be thinking about how to include your voices on a regular basis on the board, and not to have you do, um, the projects or the work to bring us information, but then how do we do this more regularly, um, with the updates? And so that's something I've been thinking about and dreaming about, um, how to make that, uh, possibility in next year, or the year to come, but, yeah. Um, also, um, wanted to thank you for your time, I mean, it just, um, I know it's hard, we're, we're still trying to figure out that schedule of when would be the sweet spot for you all to be able to come to the meetings and participate, and at the same time, I know that when it's engaging to you, and you feel like change is happening, is when more people can come and make that time. And so, thinking about how do we, what, how do we structure it, so that it's really student-centered and action-centered? Um, and then how do we, as a board, support you in that work, and our staff as well? But, um, Dr. Baldetis, was there something that we're doing with grading practices in the future? I think, I remember hearing something in a year to come perhaps, or am I off on that one?
For grading practices, uh, so right now, I think we're just looking at the proficiency still, and better alignment across the system. I think, you know, the people out in the field could speak to this a little bit better than I can, but right now, it's a continual alignment. I think people are doing good work, I think it's just the aligned work, and also, how do we get that down to the K, uh, for K through twelve to ensure that, for example, an A in school A is an A in school B, in a consistent manner in the same course. I think that's, and that's an issue across the country, so that's, uh, something that's really, can be hard to really, uh, take care of, but I think it, it gets better through collaboration with faculty, and the calibration between faculty. So, I think that's just gonna take time, it's gonna take effort to be able to calibrate, and it's, and it, and it does take time. But Beaverton's done good work in that end, I think it's, it's just that continued work in that end.
And I appreciated the, the suggestions of like, whether it's a rubric that's more detailed, so that students know what they're aiming for, um, and how their work will be scored, or whether it's, um, direct instruction on microaggressions, and how, how do we respond to those? How do we want our students to respond, how do we want our staff to respond to those, so that, um, our students know that certain behaviors, you know, we don't want them learning behaviors that are not, um, you know, appropriate for school, or, and, at least in our schools, we can, we can kind of make rules for school, not home, but, and people can have different, um, home ways of speaking at home, or acting at home, but there has to be, I think, um, some, some thought put into how do we act at school, and what's acceptable in our buildings, and what's gonna make those spaces spaces of belonging, so, thanks for all your input today, appreciate it.
Sunita?
I want to thank each and every one of you for your comments and being here. Everything that you guys said, you know, we are going to look into, at least, I, I'm, we're gonna think about it, and I was, especially, um, Ruth, I think your name is, right, Ruth, uh, about what you said about sheltered classes, I, I wasn't aware that that there are teachers not there to talk in the same language, but most of the kids are not English speakers, and I think that's something we should look into, how we can make it easier for those students, because everything is so foreign. And I think it's, it's hard to find those teachers too, I think it's not that we don't want them, but I think it's just hard. But thanks for bringing that to our attention, thank you, thank you.
Karen?
Sorry, one of the things I, um, that I know about sheltered instruction is that it's, um, training that teachers get, like, all teachers, even teachers that don't speak Spanish, or, mo- we want, basically, we want our students to be in any class, and be able to get access to the curriculum, like Ruth was saying. And so, um, in many of their shelter classes, we don't have people that are bilingual. We might have an assistant, and in ideal world, we'd have people speaking multiple languages in our shelter classes, and, um, but that's usually not our, the case, but the skillset of the teacher is such that they've had the training to be able to share the curriculum, um, in English, with multiple ways of giving access to the curriculum. And so that's something, I know, um, Toshiko's been working on in our multilingual department, but I think that's something that we continue to improve. Um, and thinking about how, um, you know, you spoke of, of many different pieces of how our newcomers in our high schools are getting access to um, the day-to-day, like, how do you, who, so that they know who to go to if they're not having access, and how are we accompanying them throughout the day, um, as well as if, if, um, some kind of support is needed in their home language, how do we make that accessible to them? Um, but maybe in, in looking at how we are training our sheltered, you know, um, courses, the teachers in our shelter course, courses would be interesting too, but thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, we really appreciate our time with you today, and best of luck to our graduating seniors, and we look forward to hearing more from, uh, our juniors next year. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And with that, I'm gonna adjourn our work session for the student advisory committee, and I am going to call into order the Beaverton School Board work session for the board self-evaluation. And I will just start by noting that we have, uh, all seven board members present. Before we go into the self-evaluation, let me provide you all with a little bit of background information. So, um, way back, uh, before the beginning of this school year, uh, the board got together and determined our goals and our committees, and along with our goals, our measures of success that we were gonna measure our, our goals by. And this year, we had three goals that we took a look at, uh, basically a new strategic plan, passing a successful option levy, and realigning our board election zones. And each one of those goals had a measure of success underneath that, that we were gonna judge ourselves by. So this is part of our, our plan for, um, evaluating ourselves, is to make sure that we set the rubrics and the measurements ahead of time, so that when we got to this point in the year, we would be able to evaluate, how have we done this year? Uh, you know, and provide, um, some structure to that. Um, I'm gonna walk us through kind of a structured conversation around that, where everybody's gonna have a chance to be able to give input into those goals and those measures. Um, and then, um, at the end, um, we can make a determination if we want to write that up into a couple paragraphs, so we have like a written evaluation, or if we just kind of want to leave it orally with the recording here, uh, depending on the information that's given tonight. So, the first question I have for the board, and I'm gonna go through this with each of our goals, is for goal number one, and I'm just gonna read it verbatim here, develop a new strategic plan using a consultant, work with students, parents, staff, and community to identify the key areas of focus for the strategic plan, and the accompanying measure of success, finish and commence implementation of a fully realized strategic plan by the end of the school year. Um, does anybody believe that we didn't meet that measure of success, and if so, what was left unfinished? So I'll just pause there, if anybody has any comments about that. Does anybody believe that we didn't meet that measure of success, or there's anything left unfinished? Okay, then for goal number two, pass a successful local option levy- Then for goal number two, pass a successful local option levy, uh, refer a local option levy to the voters. And the measure of success was to pass a local option levy in the November election. Was the measure of success met here? And if it was, or, or does it, does anybody believe we did not meet this measure of success? Uh, and if so, what was left unfinished? Okay. Then we'll do the final goal, goal number three, realign board election zones, redraw zones to comply with state laws, school district policy, and additional board identified criteria. And the measure of success that went with that was ratified through a vote of the board, a realignment of board member zones, fully compliant with all laws and policies ahead of the May 2023 election. Does anybody believe that we didn't make that measure of success? And if so, what was left unfinished? Okay. So, that's kind of the first part. We wanted to check in and see, did, did the board feel like we met our goals? And I think we feel unanimously that we met our goals. Um, but that's only the first part. The next part is, we're gonna kind of do a round robin here where folks can talk about the work that we did to try and meet those goals. And if, what would the, what was the learning like as we were doing that work, right? Were there things that we could have done better? Were there things that we did particularly well? And board members can speak to any of the three goals, um, and we'll go in zone order. So, we will start with Susan. Susan, any areas with these goals of success we did really well, or areas of learning we could have done better?
Well, first of all, it's, it's really nice that we achieved all three goals, right? So, I'd like to congratulate everybody for that. Um, I would say that, you know, just kind of assessing my own involvement, um, that I would say that as a board member, um, I was supportive of, you know, the passing of the levy, but I mean, I mean, I'm gonna say I could have done more. Um, so, you know, in assessing that piece, I would encourage us to, you know, be working, I mean, I went out to schools and things like that, but I know that there was a heavy lift from two of our school board members. I, um, so recognizing that. And in terms of the strategic plan, um, uh, you know, this is more of the coulda, woulda, shoulda, this is more like what I'm used to, to, to the changes that are, you know, more in alignment with other districts out there in terms of engagement, uh, with the strategic, strategic plan. Um, you know, we were there for, uh, the consultant and we were there for some of the verbiage, but, um, a lot of it was done by the district. So, you know, we're gonna work together on the metrics, but, and I wish it was, you know, that we could have engaged more that way. Um, and the third one was the, I just found it, the process made sense in some ways, but I also found it confusing. And I don't know if it, it was just, maybe, I don't know, I just found it confusing.
Was there a particular part, like, um, determining the geographic boundaries, or deciding on the schools, or just any?
I think it may have been the way it was presented kind of got confusing at times. So, I mean, so, but, I mean, it makes sense logically. It made sense to do the realignment in terms of zones and all that when you look at populations. But it's like, that happened at the same time, you know, there was a lot happening at the same time. So, I think that might have been the confusing part for me.
Thanks, Susan. Um, Karen?
And you had me taking a little bit of notes, so that's why I'm typing.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I think as a, this year, as a newer board member, we have a new, I'm a newer board member and having a new, uh, superintendent, um, it's taken, a success, I think, is that we were still able, even with those changes, able to successfully plat, get the strategic plan completed and pass the levy, um, and realign the board zones. I mean, it, it's just, it's a lot to happen. With the strategic plan, I too, I think, would have liked to be involved a little bit more, but I'm not sure within our role how that would occur. Um, with the passing of the options levy, I was really thankful to Becky who got us started and had even a little pot of money for us to get started with the levy. Um, and her experience was very helpful to, I was also very thankful for Sunita. We spent a ton of hours every week. Um, and as I look forward to, um, at a point when we have to, another bond or a levy as a board, I'm curious to know how do we share that responsibility? Um, and curious to see how other districts are sharing that responsibility so it isn't such a heavy lift for like a Becky, Becky who, who did the bond and us, uh, doing the levy. I know people are busy and so, um, it's always hard to ask others to, can you help us with this? And when we did ask, I think people did step up and help. Um, and part of it might be that as new board members, we didn't know how else to help. Or we, and maybe Sunita and I, is that we were learning, we didn't know how to, what to ask for because we were still learning the process. Um, for, um, something that I, as, as I'm, we move into next year that I'm hoping for is thinking about how do we share out more information, um, with the whole board, um, instead of, um, sometimes leadership, we do, we have to make decisions and we, um, and so I'm thinking about like a shared vision of responsibility for the board and whether it's with policies, or whether it's with, uh, new topics that come up, how do we do that more as a, a shared board? And I think the proposed calendar that we have, where we have actual meetings on the calendar for, um, work sessions more often, um, we can always not use them if we don't need them, but it's an opportunity for us to have those in our calendars now so that we can actually, um, have those conversations in a shared way. Um, in my dream world, that's what I'm hoping for. Um, and then, um, I've been, um, really thankful to Carrie, um, on Dr. Valdades' staff too for putting together, um, a lot of the, the different, and talking me through the board packets and putting together, for example, the, um, the board zone alignment so that I could ask questions. And again, that was kind of leadership getting that, that piece. Um, and so, it made, the way that she explains things, I find very helpful in me making sense of the information when there's things changing. I've also, um, wondering how do we, um, I know that we have a lot of, um, we read our board packets, like, we read the entire board packet and just the way that the system is set up for boards, we can't talk to each other outside of different, you know, like the board meeting spaces. And so, um, thinking about how do we provide space without making the meeting super long for people, for us to have a little bit more discussion? And maybe that's where the work session piece will be helpful more often. So, that's, those are things that I'm pondering of how I think the successes is all the pieces that we did accomplish. Um, I've had a lot of learning this year. I have appreciated, um, Carrie and Dr. Valdades answering our questions and the staff. Um, and the learning is how do we have more, in my dream world, a shared, um, flow of information? I think that the memos are helpful. Um, I think that, um, how we are going to start sharing our questions is helpful, um, so that we can just kind of see what, um, I don't know, so we can learn together, I guess.
And I just wanna make sure we're, as we move forward, keeping our conversation kind of the three bullet points that we have here in terms of the evaluation, 'cause we, we have a structured thing that we set up from the beginning. So, Susan?
So, the, not within that, uh, then this is probably not pertinent, but I think a process in terms of our school board meeting, in terms of like timing of our school board meetings, like, we packed a lot into our sessions. And so, I, I mean, I think the work sessions will help, but then there were just a lot of reports throughout the school board meetings this year that just create, first of all, you, is overload.
That's great input. Um, I, I, Karen, I'm gonna, I believe you guys are gonna have a work session in the summer where you kind of look forward to like the future board work and what that looks like. Um, I'm not trying to tamp down the conversation here, 'cause these are all really great points that everybody's making, but I really wanna make sure that we're keeping it to kind of our, the three areas that we took a look at. Um, so, um, that when we compile the notes on that, we have kind of a tight evaluation of what this board has done. But I think there's gonna be lots of space going forward for the future board to take a look at some of the practices and the different things and, and create something new going forward. So, um, I'm gonna pass it over to Eric.
So, I think the option levy was like a home run. You know, I give it a big thumbs up. It was great, you know, Becky has so much experience on that. And I thought another thing that was really good is getting Sunita, you know, continuity, um, for the next, you know, in a couple of years down the road. So, I thought that was really good. And I might like it too because you guys packaged assignments and the message he was good and he gave everybody, you know, tasks to go out and do their areas and things to do. And, you know, obviously with 70%, that was a huge victory, so big thumbs up on that. Um, I also liked, um, the next one on the redistricting or, you know, make sure the load balancing. I thought the district did a really nice job of the, you know, 'cause there's only so many ways you can slice the map and do the mathematics. So, I thought it was good that, um, Sparks and, um, you know, Portland State, you're getting all the demographic data, um, kind of coalescing to about two options, maybe a little bit more, but a little fine tuning. I think that was really nice to have, um, a lot of homework done by the district to say, here's just, here's where we're at, you know, here's what it looks like, just to kind of load balance. So, I thought that was very successful. And, um, as it ended up, you know, every, everybody has about same amount of schools in his own and they have like, you know, one major school, the high school, and then, you know, the, the supporting middle school and elementary. So, I thought it was, thumbs up on that as well. And then, uh, strategic plan, um, I think it was smart. I mean, obviously we need superintendent to get a well-seasoned consultant. I think that's a good move to do, 'cause it's, um, these things are bears, are huge to do. But, um, I thought it went well. Um, I guess only, I mean, nothing horrible, I guess, about it. I think every, I think the key thing at the end of a strategic plan is to make sure, like, yeah, I think we heard Susan say it, but make sure the new board gets on there and looks at the metrics and, you know, the deliverables you wanna hit. 'Cause I think, um, talk is great and everything's polished, it's nice, but it really comes down, it's like we want, you know, results, numbers, the metrics, the rubrics at the end. So, I think, um, that's probably for the new board, you know, during a session to, you know, we got, we got where we want to be. And so now, really the details at the end of where you wanna be in the next, you know, two, one, two, three, four, five years for the new board leadership, I think that'll be important. But I give it a thumbs up. I think, you know, made it by the end of the year, so took the whole year.
Sunita?
Well, it's great that we hit all the, all the three goals. So, that's, that's the best thing. The first, the strategic plan, I'm glad that we even looked at it. That was, you know, and, um, I would be interested going forward in seeing how, so the good thing was that the opinions and, and, um, what, what matters to us was taken into consideration when we were coming up the strategic plan. So, that, that I'm very thankful for. And, but I would be interested in how we hit those, you know, how, and keep on reviewing them while we are on the board. And the levy, so thanks Becky for that one, and thanks to Karen for all the hours. And, um, Carrie, Carrie was really a big help with the levy. Her name doesn't come up so much, but she was there in the, I think, uh, giving out pamphlets, knocking on doors, being in the meetings on Friday mornings. She was there to help. So, um, but going forward, I would really like it also if the staff, we could get some more help from the staff, because when I compare our bond work with the levy work, I didn't feel that support was there, because when we went out in the classrooms, before we used to have a person with us from the staff, we didn't have it for the levy and the, um, sometimes the voice wasn't coming, or what we were presenting, people had to guess what, what they are listening to. So, that's something that I would say that that could be better. And as far as getting, um, help from the other board members, I think that would be great. Thanks, Susan, for suggesting that. Um, I think, um, if we can, because sometime, we both were new, both Karen and myself, we were new, and we were trying to get as much help as we could. But I, we know that everybody is busy too, so, uh, there was a list made out for people to come and help, but maybe we can think of more ways in getting more help from our other board members in making the calls and stuff. But on the whole, I'm glad that it passed and, so, thanks for everybody who gave the help with that one. And the last one, the realignment, um, I would agree with Susan. It was kind of confusing in the beginning to understand, but I would say, uh, that staff did, still did a good job in helping us understand it. And for all the three goals, I wanna thank Tom, because I could call him and ask him questions and he helped. So, thank you, Tom, for that.
Um, I think we have Ugana next.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, I'm glad that we, um, met all our goals and with the strategic planning, um, with the strategic plan, I'm glad that we were able to engage our community members throughout the process. So, it was not something that the board just did, um, on their own. It was something that we, uh, got our voices together and put it together. So, it looks really good on paper, so I can't wait to see it implemented. I wanna see what it looks like when we implement it and find ways, if any, to, um, continue to make it better if necessary. So, that one, um, I'm excited about and can't wait to see it being implemented. And then for the local option levy, um, I'm glad that, that got passed. And just like everybody else has said, um, I don't think it was fair that, um, the bulk of the work was left for two people. But then again, being new, I wasn't exactly sure how to get involved, other than when I was asked to sign up to go talk to schools, go to schools and, and talk and, uh, represent, uh, any board member who's not available. Other than that, I was not exactly sure i- in what other ways that I could have supported the work. So, maybe next time, if there is a way that we can, um, make it clearer what is needed of each board member so that one person or two persons does not, don't have to carry the bulk of the work. So, that's one thing I, I think we should, um, look into, 'cause I was not sure what the process was, how we came up with the idea to have just two people carry that work. I wasn't sure how that happened. And I wasn't sure what I could do more, other than, you know, when they reached out and said, "Do this," I did it. So, I was not exactly sure how else, what else I could have done. So, if we can be clearer on what is expected of the board members so that it would be more like, um, uh, we can all collaborate and, and get the work done, instead of leaving it in the hands of just one or two persons. That's how I think we can, um, make that process better, be it a levy or a bond, it can be better. It shouldn't be just one or two people doing the bulk of the work. And then, um, on the realigning board zones, I, I must confess, I was confused about it initially. For a couple of weeks, I was still confused, but I'm glad that we were able to get the zones all balanced out, that everybody would have the same amount of schools and responsibilities. So, that, um, is another good one. Um, other than that, I would say kudos to us who did good. Thank you.
Becky?
For those of us that have been on the board for a while, excuse me, um, as far as goals go, these were probably as clear-cut and as simple as it gets. Um, I mean, there were three big, big goals and we knew we had to hit them, but they were also probably three of the most passive goals, except for the levy. Um, the strategic plan, the heavy lift was done by staff and by an outside group, and we pretty much were just brought in to wordsmith and say yea or nay. Um, so there, there wasn't a lot of extra meetings or a heavy lift by the, by the board on, on that. The same thing with the, with the zoning. Um, it was done by an outside group, it was presented to us, uh, there was some stuff that was behind the scenes as far as, you know, getting the populations right and, and all that kind of thing. But we pretty much just had to come in and say we liked these three kind of maps and, you know, kind of, kind of go with those. So, those two are, as far as year-long goals, pretty, pretty passive, straightforward, you know, sorts of goals. Um, definitely the heavy lift is the levy. Um, I think it felt more so because we were just right on the heels of just getting a bond passed. And I would say we're very fortunate in the heavy lift is, um, we have a community that really, really likes the Beaverton School District. And if we ever really had a tough, tough campaign, it would be a much heavier lift that the board would have to, to do. Um, so, um, and we also hire an outside So, and we also hire an outside group that helps us with a lot of the pieces. And we have a phenomenal staff, especially a communication staff, that puts together so many pieces. If we had to do that ourselves as a board, as an outside and hire that kind, I mean, it is top-notch. They set up where we're supposed to be for meetings, they set up the Beaverton Farmer's Market, the outside groups. But we are all busy people, and the biggest thing that has to be done is always the raising of money. And that's tough. That is tough, especially when we just did it a year and a half beforehand. And I will tell you, as being a veteran of being the lead on a levy and on a bond, no matter how you slice it, no matter how you dice it, no matter how, somebody is going to be the lead and the bulk of the responsibility is going to land on that person. That's, that's the way, that's the way it goes. And I am so glad, on top of everything else they were doing, that Sunita and Corinne were able to do that, because learn by doing. It's not by just hearing and seeing in a book, it's by doing it. And you can learn for the next time around what can be done differently and, and how it, it can be done. So I think we can say we're going to share the responsibility, it's just really hard when you're making the phone calls, it's really hard when you're trying to track down voters' pamphlet statements, it's very, but definitely, can it be done better and more equitably? Absolutely, absolutely. But I think, again, as far as campaigns go, as hard as a lift is it felt, the burden felt, this was a pretty easy, in the big scheme of things, pretty, pretty easy, and it passed so overwhelmingly. So, you know, maybe you, we go back and look at our things like going to the farmer's market, is it worth it? Or is going, trying to go door-to-door, is it worth it? Is, you know, what, what kind of things are worth, because that all takes people power? And you have limited people power on your, so anyway, with that said, I think it's a, you know, onward and upward. When you feel success, it's really easy to plan for the next time around because you know what success feels like. And it feels a lot better than when you put out goals for yourself and you don't succeed. So good for, good for the, good for the year.
Yes, Sunita?
For the levy that, that's coming back and what Becky just said, you know, like, we went door-to-door twice. I think I went twice in farmer's market and all those. But choosing the locations where you go makes a big difference, because one place where we went, people were very, you know, like, they were talking. The other place, they were so far apart, the houses that were selected, we knocked on the door, nobody there, and it was like, so I think how the, the places are selected also makes a big difference, to make it worth it. You know, like you're spending your afternoon there and to get to one, from one place to another place, if it takes 15 minutes, it's not worth it. But if you're going to 10 doors and you're getting people who are opening and are, are happy to see you and want to talk to you, then, then it makes a difference. So choosing the locations does make a big difference.
Eric?
I want to make apologies to you, Corinne. You're the one in the option levy, I'm sorry, I gave Becky credit for that one, but my mind was still on the bond measure before, but like, I felt good that, you know, the torch was handed from Becky to you and Sunita. So, you know, continuity of excellence for the next option levy in five years from now.
I actually appreciated you saying Sunita running the next one. I mean, I was all, I was all in, I heard you, and I was like, thumbs up on that one.
I just want to start with a big appreciation to Corinne and Sunita. Like, I think you guys deserve a huge hands. And like, one thing that's noted is, this campaign was put together in a very truncated period of time, because the consultant identified a window that would be, you know, positive for our election dynamics. But what that meant is that you guys were doing like, months' worth of work in a very, very condensed period of time, and you had to hit your fundraising goals like this. And like, that exponentially ramps up the challenge. Because fundraising is something that builds over a long period of time. Working with a consultant builds, you build those relationships. Even knocking doors, it's not that effective if you only do it for a couple of weeks, you should be doing that for months if you really want to change any of those dynamics. So the fact that you guys were able to get such a successful outcome too, like the, the numbers coming out of that campaign were incredible. Like, there was a lot of community support, but that also meant a lot of communication out to folks in the community that you guys were doing. So just tons of appreciation there. I think one thing that we might want to look at in the future, or a future board should be looking at, is two years ahead of where we want to be with a levy or a bond, getting together with a consultant, or getting together, at least as a group internally, and starting to plan from way out. Because when you talk about the apportionment of that work, I think that the more time you have, as you approach it, the more easily you can apportion the work and come up with like plans and ways. I also agree with Becky, at a certain point, when you have an effort like that, there's got to be somebody who's a lead. And you're never going to get away from that. That's just like gravity, that's the facts. But I think if you were able to think about it two years out, something like that, you'd be a lot more effective in helping spread the burden. And I, and I do think you guys had a pretty intense burden that the rest of the board didn't have. So that's both a success and a challenge in my book. Like, it's a success because you guys rose above and achieved that, but it's also a challenge in that, how can we do better next time? I also think taking a look at our relationship with the consultant and making sure we're getting out what we, we want from that relationship, and that we're truly getting the value, and building an intentional plan with them that isn't one that's kind of put together, you know, quickly towards the end, I think would also be helpful as well. I echo a lot, pretty much like everybody pulled, mentioned the points that I was going to make throughout the night. I think it's really important to think about how we explain complex things like realigning the board election zones. I appreciated that comment, that that was confusing for folks. So how can we work to develop ways to put that information in front of people where they have more time to process it ahead of time, different systems that way? So that's great input. And I echo that too, that is a difficult and confusing thing. And then when it comes to the strategic plan, again, this is for a future board, but Eric, I think you said that those measures of success, those rubrics, like, those are key. And how are those going to be set up so that we have transparency and accountability, and that everybody's moving in the same direction? So I, I look forward to seeing what the board members who remain are going to do in that area. You guys, I think, are going to do some pretty incredible work coming up. So, okay, my, my last thing here is, we can, we can do one of two things with this. We can keep this recording as our document of our, our evaluation, or Corinne and I can work based off of some of the notes and kind of create like a summary of our evaluation. And does anybody have a particular preference one way or another? We're not going to take a vote on this, but just anything that, that makes sense to folks?
I trust you guys.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can figure it out afterwards which way we want to go, but. But I'm, I'm truly grateful to have been a board chair with such an amazing board. And I know, like, these three goals, like, when we were reading through them, it kind of felt like a little silly saying, did we achieve this? Because it was so obvious we had, right? But we had to go through the process, that's what you have to do when you do these. But it was so obvious because of the great work that we all have done this year. And I really appreciate everybody who, who's, who's come together to make sure that we have a good strategic plan, that we have a good local option levy, that we've realigned our board zones. And right now, it's like, we finished all that work, it's done, it kind of feels like, like a little bit like yesterday, but those are huge things. Those are huge things for the district. And even the work that we did the year before, where we put even more on our back. I mean, part of the reason this year was only three goals is because the year before we had done so many different things. Exactly. Exactly. So like, I guess I just want to take a moment to appreciate everybody and how well we've worked together to be able to achieve those goals. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we will end our work session on the board self-evaluation. And, yeah.